The council is present with the exception of Councilman Eric Franzen. We have, let's see, first item on business, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Are there hidden behind us here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our digs. Apologize about the tight quarters. We're working on some nice, beautiful quarters downstairs. Spring, is that correct?
Yes.
Late spring?
Yeah, April.
April, okay. We'll be back in our chambers, that'll be more inclusive to all of our neighbors. And we have some new things going on down there, so appreciate you bearing with us here. We fit into this beautiful room. First item in front of us is public comment. No action will be taken on these items. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items that are not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to 30 minutes of total time, with each individual allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. You must sign up ahead of time in order to comment, and that sign up period begins 30 minutes before the start of the meeting. The council will accommodate as many speakers as possible during this time, with preference to town residents. But if public comment extends beyond the allotted 30 minutes, town council will continue public comment at the end of the meeting prior to adjourning for those who signed up prior to the meeting. As any matters raised by individuals during public comment are not on the agenda and other potentially interested parties would not therefore be aware of discussion of these matters, town council will not engage in dialogue regarding any items raised during this public comment. With all of that said, is any member of 12 wishing to address council tonight? Anything on the general public comment? Seeing none, we'll open and close public comment at 7:02 and move on to reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Laura, start with you.
Yes. Last week, myself with councilmember Dyak and councilmember Wilks attended the Core Electric Annual Member Luncheon with Mandy Lesher as the chief speaker. She's the chief experience officer, and she had the privilege of talking to the audience about the electric issues, electricity and the cost of that that is potentially increasing due to requirements that the state legislature actually is putting upon the state. And so that was a very enlightening lunch that we had with Mandy Lesher, and I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. John?
All right. Also, I think Councilmember Hendricks was at that lunch as well, too, that Core Lunch. So it was good. The 29th, the mayor and myself attended advancing Lincoln Road. It was a presentation on the Lincoln 925 interchange over the lountrie from the Arts Center. Great to represent, to kind of see what's happening with transportation matters and lountrie. And obviously, very encouraged or we're more than happy that they're advancing multi-modal options within the region. Also, the mayor and I attended a ribbon cutting, Parker Landing. They were 20 years in business and five years in business in the Parker area. So always good to celebrate local businesses supporting our community.
Thank you, John. Brittany?
Okay. On the 20th, I actually got to do a state Capitol tour with our House District Representative, Anthony Hartsuk, which was wonderful. I took the kids and they got to learn a little bit about Colorado history and see how it works up there and out on the floor, which was nice. I also did for the Chamber of Commerce, Andy's Custard had a ribbon cutting, so they are officially open. And it was, it was a really quick one because we had a meeting right after that. So it was there and cut and shaped and congratulated, and then off to the next thing. I was part of the Women's Experience through the Chamber of Commerce. It's a year-long program for women that are in business, either working in the business or as business owners. And so we had our graduation because we completed our year of classes with that, which was wonderful. And if you guys want more information on that, go to the Chamber site. We had, I'll save that one for you because I keep still on all your stuff and everybody else keeps doing your stuff. I went to the Matt Fraser Show at the Pace Center. My husband and I are big supporters of the arts here in Parker, as well as a lot of other council members. And so it was wonderful just to see a show up on the main stage for that. I met with the CEO for the Parker Chamber of Commerce, and we had just our quarterly lunch get together just to see, you know, how things are going with the businesses throughout town and what the town can do to help with that if need be. And they're just, they're crushing it, so I'm very proud of our chamber. Attended the Frontier Valley Elementary Trunk or Treat, which is just fun for the kids to go to, but it's great to see the community come out for that, along with the Legend Trunk or Treat at Legend High School. And those kids put on a great trunk or treat. Like, it was cool to see all the different clubs at Legend come out and give the candy out to the kids and get dressed up and really get into the spirit. And then I had my local Indigenous Leaders Agenda Prep meeting. So for the National League of Cities Annual Conference that we're attending here in a couple of weeks, I sit on the local Indigenous Leaders Board, and we were talking about the things that are upcoming and what's been happening legislative-wise to all of the different tribes and communities throughout our nation, so it was good to help with that. And then I got to see another show at the Pace Center called Illuminate with the Kids, and that was yesterday, and that was just fantastic. So if you haven't checked out any shows at the Pace Center this year, I highly suggest you do because they're amazing.
Thank you, Brittany. Anna?
So the DBA put on a trunk or treat, and I volunteered with that with them. I was able to sit in with Judge White and just observe him. He's, since he's one of our employees, that's supposed to be keeping up with him. And I, in two and a half years, I haven't visited his courtroom, so I learned a lot. We had a meeting with the Davis County Housing Partnership. I attended a ribbon cutting for the Grecian Grazer. I drove for the Parker Task Force on their food drive. Two meetings with National League of Cities First Year Suburban Council, and I also saw Matt Fraser. And then I took business of a breakfast with Gina.
Thank you, Brittany. Todd?
Sorry you mentioned, so nothing else.
So last, let's see, Wednesday the 22nd, this council met for a special meeting for a study session for Link on Demand. Just leave it at that, some exciting things coming to Parker, everything. On Friday, the 24th, I had the Colorado Municipal Executive Board meeting. It was a good meeting. We had a special guest. His honor, Governor Polis, was in the room. And, you know, CML and the governor don't always get along, but it was very appreciative that the governor took the time to come to our building and chat with us, talked about direction for the coming year, talked about partnership versus preemption. How can our cities and towns partner with the state instead of the state trying to override our own rule abilities? So I thought it was a good meeting. I would have been a little bit meaner, but I didn't get to speak too much, so that's a good thing. But that was, it was good. It was, I was very appreciative of taking the time to come to, come down to CML and talk to us. On Saturday, the 25th, I attended the Carter School Fall Festival. They're a new business. I did get a chance to go to the ribbon cutting, so I wanted to make up to them. And they had a fall festival with 20 different businesses inside their building selling wares, great little pre-Christmas shopping. On Monday, the 27th, in this very room, I had scout night, so something that's offered monthly by the mayor. I get down or two of scouts, they come in and they learn about municipal government or local government, and they get a badge out of it, negative patch of it, or whatever it is they're needing. But something we definitely offer, so if you have scouts that are looking for a patch, please look up, look us up on the website. And then Thursday, I had commissioners and mayors have a monthly meeting. So the three commissioners, Douglas County, and the five mayors get together, and we have lunch every month and chat about common things. And it's always good. One of the topics was shoplifting and how we're each addressing that. And so I'm very proud to say that Parker's on top of it. And then Friday, let's see, on Halloween, Friday, we had, it was the last day of service for Parker's postmaster. Alicia Mantey retired after 13 years of service at Parker and over 30 years of service to the post office. So I went by Killens and got a little something on behalf of this council. And I went and visited her and dropped it off and just appreciated everything she did. She was also very appreciative of town. She's worked all over, and she was very appreciative of the quality of service that we offer to our roads and our citizens and plowing and everything like that and maintaining distances in front of mailboxes and everything that is we do. She was very, very appreciative. She said it was a pleasure to work at Parker. So that was nice to hear. And that's all I have. Thank you for your patience, what you let us report out. Next in front of you is consent agenda, council. Consent agenda items are to be considered routine and will be enacted with one motion or one vote. There will be no separate discussion of any consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. Council, with that, in front of you are items 4A through G.
I moved your pair of consent agenda items 4A through 4G.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Sorry.
I have a motion from Wilks and a second from Hendricks. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
I have.
Dyak?
Yes.
Kefta?
Yes.
And consent agenda passes unanimously. Next in front of us, the Town Manager Report. Anything to report outside of that? So citizens, our autumn, sorry, ours, the Town Manager's Autumn Report is available online, full of information, all kinds of numbers, facts, and figures, what different departments are up to, crime stats, all kinds of things that are very, very interesting. I urge you to look for it and keep looking for it every quarter. With that, item six on our agenda is public hearings. We have two items in public hearings. First, we have item 6A, ordinance number 1.667 on first reading, a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2026 budget and to make appropriations for the same. Presenting to us, Chris's.
Oh, two Chris's, that's weird.
I'm sorry. I need to open this public hearing, excuse me, at 7:11 PM, please.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Chris Fandaka, Finance Director. And with us tonight, we also have Chris Beaver, the Town's Budget Manager, and Rhonda Willie, the Town's Controller. We're here tonight to present the town's proposed budget for 2026. I'd first like to thank the Town Manager's Office, all of the departments, the finance team, and all of you for the collaborative effort that has gone into the budget that demonstrates the town's commitment to provide excellent service to this community. With that, we'll get started. So these are some of the priorities that have been discussed internally and with you all when we met with you in June to review priorities. So the budget always must align with the strategic plan for the town, and that is the foundation of every budget process. We always want to retain and attract a talented workforce, adding positions to keep pace with service delivery, public safety, of course, repair and maintenance of existing infrastructure, business growth and retention, preparing to pay off our general fund debt in 2027, and addressing increasing insurance costs townwide. For the budget development, a number of things go into this process. We look at the strategic plan, as I mentioned. We have numerous meetings with you all, with departments and Town Manager's Office, all through the summer to develop this budget. The long-range 10-year plan for the town was presented to you in August, and that is always top of mind as we have these discussions. Revenue analysis and economic trends, we're always looking at that and tweaking forecasts throughout the summer in order to determine the resources that the town has available to provide the services that we do. We work very closely with HR for compensation and benefits analysis, and they do a lot of their own research as well. We have numerous meetings again with Department and Town Manager's Office and reviewing baseline expenditure budgets for each department. We always start with the previous year and then build on that. And then we go through a process with each department whereby they submit budget requests for review, and we have a decision process for that. As far as economic updates, many of you know that the Fed recently cut rates in October by 25 basis points, down to the 3.75% to 4% range. And we'll see if we get one more this year. A lot of signs point to yes, but there's still a little bit of uncertainty there. Other items, just want to point out that consumer sentiment has still been ticking down, although spending remains fairly strong. And so we'll see what the next few months bring to us. For sales tax, our year-to-date sales tax growth compared to the same time last year is 4.58%, which is pretty robust compared to other surrounding areas. We had budgeted a 3.5% increase for this year. However, we need a 4.2% increase over the 2024 actual collections in order to reach our target for the budget in 2025. And that is because when we developed that 3.5% growth, that was on projected 2024 sales tax at that time, and the actuals ended up coming a little under projections. So we had additional ground to make up, but we're currently sitting in a good position at 4.58% to meet budget. This just shows our late-in-the-game budget development schedule, so these are when the big decisions happen. So on September 26th of this year, we had the all-day budget retreat of Town Council and had some good discussion and decisions there. We post the preliminary or this budget on the town's website by October 15th of each year. We had a study session to discuss that proposed budget that was released on October 20th. We are here today on November 3rd for the first reading of the budget. Second reading will be November 17th, along with a second public hearing. And then by January 31st, we will release the full budget document and file the budget with the state. So since we did meet with you all on October 20th at that study session, a change has been made. So we want to call attention to the addition of the Link on Demand Transit Service Pilot Program funding for next year. This is just the amount that was agreed to for next year, so it increased total general fund expenditures to $82.9 million for next year. This slide summarizes the new positions that will be added for the town across all funds. And for the general fund, we are adding 11.5 new FTEs. 8.5 of those are for police, two are for public works, and one is in risk management. In other funds, we have the addition of an audio tech for cultural fund and a stormwater maintenance tech for the stormwater enterprise fund, for a total of 13.5 positions across all funds added to the budget for next year. For compensation and benefits included in the budget is a 2% adjustment to pay ranges. That will be effective January 1st. And then there is a 3% merit pool for full-time employees, which will be effective in March of 2026. For the police department, those that are eligible for step advancement, in addition to the 2% range adjustment in January, they will also get a 6% step increase for those that are eligible, which would be a total of 8%. For retirement and FPPA contributions, both for civilian employees and for sworn, the increase will be a half a percent to 11% for most employees. I'm sorry, that's wrong. Just the civilian employees, oh, that is for FPPA as well. For both, increasing half a percent to 11% for most employees. FPPA employees do contribute 12% of their own into that fund, and then civilian employees contribute 8%. Health insurance premium increases for employee and town at 5% with no plan changes. This slide represents all funds' proposed expenditures for next year. And this is really just to show that across all funds for the town, the total budget is 173.2 million, or 42 million, and 48% of that is the general fund. Special revenue funds at 25% include things like the cultural fund, Parks and Recreation Fund, and then capital projects funds are at 14%. This slide shows a summary of general fund revenues and some historical information along with the proposed budget for next year. So overall, we're looking at a 1.32% revenue growth over the 2025 amended budget amount. You'll see that licenses and permits are down compared to the 2025 budget, and that's primarily due to building permits, which fluctuates a lot. And we were a bit over-budgeted on the revenue side this year, so we're budgeting conservatively on that for next year. Intergovernmental is also down, and that's just because there was grant funding that was received and budgeted for in 2025 that is one time and will not be budgeted in 2026. So overall, increase of 1.13 million, which is 1.32% revenue growth. The next slide just shows the top five revenue sources of the general fund, and the top five revenue sources being sales tax, building permits, property tax, the road and bridge shareback from the county, and then electric excise taxes. So those top, those five sources are 84% of all general fund revenue. And you can see that sales tax is by far the largest portion at 70% of that. Speaking of sales tax, as I mentioned before, the, we're proposing a 2.5% increase for next year on the sales tax budget, and that 2.5% will be calculated on our projected revenue so far in 2025. Projected 2025 revenues are 3.25% over 2024 actuals. Collections from new businesses and increases in existing businesses may flatten out in 2026. We feel that it's important to budget conservatively for next year, given the state of the economy and some unknowns that may be coming our way. But this, we, you know, we just want to demonstrate to between all the sources of general fund, we are very, very reliant on sales tax at 70%. This slide shows some historic sales tax growth that we've experienced. We have the spike in the post-COVID years of 2021, 2022. It's definitely leveled out and flattened out. We expect that to continue, and so again, budgeting conservatively for next year, 2.5% growth. This is general fund expenditures by department, and police and public works make up 65% of the budget for next year. And, you know, we have a little bit budgeted for debt service to make our annual payment. It does include transfers out to other funds such as the cultural fund, and total general fund expenditures being just under $83 million. This also shows general fund expenditures, but by category this time. So you can see that salary and benefits are 51% of the general fund budget, and that is very much in line with, you know, surrounding areas. I went and took a look at other areas and we're very close or actually quite low compared to other areas surrounding us. So purchase services is also a big chunk at 22% of that budget. And this is for things such as repair and maintenance, you know, resurfacing of our streets, concrete work, traffic signal maintenance, medians, engineering services, and things like that. So it is a big chunk of the general fund budget. Wanted to highlight some significant budget items in the general fund side of the budget. For the police department, we are adding a significant amount to their overtime budget of $362,000, and that's really just a true of that budget for, based on historical actuals, just getting them where they need to be in that line. They are also getting some new vehicles, some unmarked vehicles for investigations, and one for the new deputy chief. Reinstituting the police reserve program at a very small cost, but hoping that it's impactful and will assist the police department with call volume. Also adding two school resource officers, half of which will be reimbursed by the county. For public works, we are increasing the repair and maintenance budget for street resurfacing by quite a bit at just over $1.1 million.
By the district, school resource officers.
I'm sorry, yes, by the school district, yes, thank you. Also increasing snow removal supplies and repair and maintenance related to striping and traffic signals, and also getting a new road weather information system that is now outdated. For parks and forestry and open space, some increased funding for median maintenance and replacement of things like trash cans, benches, and tables. And then, of course, the $250,000 that will actually be part of the community development budget for that pilot program for Link on Demand. This summarizes the community partnerships that the town has budgeted in the 2026 budget. So maintaining funding for Parker Senior Center, Chamber of Commerce, with some in-kind contributions for rental facilities. Everything else is maintained compared to the previous year. For memberships, we had some slight increases to CML and Dr. Cog, and the rest is the same as last year for memberships. And this summarizes our debt service payment for next year. We only have the one certificate of participation balance remaining, so that annual payment with principal and interest is $2.3 million. As built into the 10-year long-range plan, we do at this time plan for paying off that debt early in 2027. That'll be our first ability to do that. That's when it's callable, which means we can pay it off early. So if we do that, that will be approximately $17 million in 2027, which will reduce the fund balance significantly, which we'll talk about, but it will save in the neighborhood of $3 to $4 million of interest expense for the general fund. So this summarizes just the revenue and expenditures for the general fund and the fund balance. So we are looking at a proposed ending fund balance for the general fund of $50.5 million at the end of 2026, and FTE count at just under 310 general fund employees. This is a similar slide that we included in the long-range plan to show what we predict the fund balance will be for the general fund over the next 10 years. So you see that large drop in 2027, which is related to paying off that debt. And previously, when we showed this to you at the long-range plan meeting in August, you know, we had the general fund being at 25% at 2035, at the end of the 10 years. Since then, you know, we've added the SROs, and we've added the Link on Demand for, and we only have that captured for the two years of the pilot, and that's the impact it has to the, to the general fund, fund balance. So down to about just under 22%. For our other funds, Parks and Recreation, there are high expenditures in 2025, and that's related to Salisbury Park and Worth, of course. There is some budgeted for that in 2026, but significantly reduced compared to 2025. So their, their fund balance, you know, proposed, predicted for the end of '26 is still very healthy, and that will continue to grow over the long-range plan and, you know, leaving it there for potential capital projects in the future. So this highlights a couple of significant items in that fund. So of course, Salisbury Park, regional park expansion, there's $13.5 million budgeted for that next year. And they're also updating their Parks Recreation and Open Space, and then the Open Space Trails and Greenways Master Plan. So there is funding in the budget for that for next year. For the Recreation Fund, projected fund balance to be about 2.1 million at the end of next year. That's about 15.5%, slightly lower than we'd like to see, but there's been a number of capital projects that have needed to happen across all their facilities. And really, when you remove those one-time capital costs, the fund balance is higher. So I'm calculating that on the total, but really, it is a little bit higher than that. So, oh, and the FTE count is reduced a little bit for a childcare coordinator position that was reduced. Significant items for the rec fund. Across all divisions for the rec fund, there's adjustments to part-time salaries. Across all divisions for the rec fund, there's adjustments to part-time salaries as a result of a compensation study in a previous year. So getting them caught up on that needed to add to the budget. There are going to be some fieldhouse office renovations for about $1 million, which is a remodel to address some space concerns that they have, issues they have in their office space there. They have fitness equipment replacement in the fieldhouse and rec centers. And then roll-up doors, waterproofing, miscellaneous maintenance at the rec center. And then at the H2 O'Brien swimming facility, a roof and boiler replacement for next year. In the cultural fund, predicted ending fund balance at the end of next year, one point, just under 1.7 million. And it's about 19.2%, which is, is pretty decent for next year. You know, we've already discussed the concerns we have going forward with the fund balance in that fund. And those conversations will still, you know, happen. Their strategic plans will help inform some of that discussion. And so that is, that is on the horizon. Significant items for the cultural fund, adding the audio tech position for specialized work with production, and that does include supplies and related costs for that position. There will be some capital, capital improvements to improve the patron experience, including lobby and conference room refreshes, digital signs, upgrading the pit seating, upgrading equipment, and purchasing a lift to get personnel up higher in that theater. For the schoolhouse, there will be heritage center updates. So development of an interpretive plan and updates to the schoolhouse heritage center that are also budgeted for next year. For the public improvements fund, which is a capital project fund, there will be about $14.1 million of expenditures for next year. Fund balance will still remain healthy. Some of that is restricted for projects that will happen in the future, but we keep a close line on that to make sure that there's enough available fund balance to cover future projects. And then this is an example of the various projects that are budgeted in this fund for next year. And that includes some road widens, street construction, reconstructions, signals, and then the Parker Road 20-mile E470 project as well. The capital renewal and replacement fund is also a capital projects fund. The only revenue coming into this one for next year is interest income and then a transfer from the general fund to help fund the public art. And so the $125,000 that you see as the expenditure, that's for the public art. There's nothing else planned in that fund for next year, but the fund balance will be set aside and retained for future capital projects. And this is where the town hall expansion was paid from this fund. So for capital renewal and replacement fund, for 2026, we'll complete the town hall renovation and the pace parking garage. Whatever was budgeted in 2025 for those items, it's not fully complete and spent, will just be rolled forward into next year. And then, of course, the continued transfer from general fund for public art. Future priorities, we do have that $27.1 million fund balance at the end of '26. And we're looking at the Pewalk facility expansion, police facility expansion, and then the old town hall demolition on the horizon in future years. So the excise tax is a fee paid by developers at the time a building permit is issued for residential or commercial development or redevelopment. These fees must be used for capital projects that expand capacity related to growth, such as street widening or construction of parks. It cannot be used for maintenance or ongoing operations. So there's pretty strong performance in the excise tax fund this year. It definitely exceeded budget. It's expected to be about double of what it was the year before. And this is a pretty tough one to forecast. It's pretty cyclical and variable. So we budgeted conservatively for next, for next year at 7.2 million. And that was in conjunction with conversations with community development. So we got their input and landed on that number, which we feel is fairly conservative. So for the excise tax fund for next year, as I mentioned, the fund is performing well. The fund will support the Parks and Recreation Fund and Public Improvements Fund. So we do make transfers from excise tax fund into that capital projects fund and into parks and recreation for those capital projects. And that's for, again, growth-related projects. So some is being transferred into parks for Salisbury Park, regional park construction. And then public works uses these funds for infrastructure projects in the public improvements fund related to expanding capacity. So road widening, extending, things like that. So 2026 includes a transfer to Parks and Rec of 1.5 million. It will also include a 6.1 million transfer to the public improvements fund. And then there is a developer reimbursement budgeted out of that fund for the park right across the street to reimburse that developer for the construction of that park for that agreement. So that is budgeted. Some will be paid this year, which will be coming to you on the 2025 revision. And then the additional 2.1 million will be paid to that next year. It's a really important source for capital projects, this particular funding source. And so we're mindful of keeping that, letting the fund balance grow as much as possible and only using it for those growth-related infrastructure projects. So Stormwater Fund is our only enterprise fund. And revenue is reduced in 20, compared to 2025, in 2026, because there were certain developer contributions that were budgeted in 2025 that are one-time, and they're for one-time capital projects. So what was budgeted for that this year will not be budgeted for next year. And you'll also see a reduction expenditures to reflect that as well. But it's largely funded also by stormwater fees charged for residential and commercial properties. So they have a pretty healthy fund balance of just under 10 million at the end of 2026, we believe. And some of that will be restricted also for future projects, but still a good amount of available fund balance for other projects that arise. So some changes for them. There is a, an addition of a stormwater maintenance technician for the next year. There is some additional work for repair and maintenance for drainage. And then there's some master plan improvements to Cherry Creek near Main Street that will be budgeted for next year. Okay, one stretch, wrap up of this discussion. So regarding the long-range plan, just talking about some assumptions that we built into the plan for the plan that we did this year compared to last year. We're still feeling like we want to stick with modest revenue growth. So those assumptions are built into the long-range plan. We do have the assumption that we're going to pay off that debt in 2027. There were just over $3 million in general fund budget requests for the 2026 budget cycle that was not, that were not funded. So not able to get to everything. We thought it was important to contribute to the fund balance, given what the next 10 years holds for us. Just in 2027 through '29, those three years, we already know there will be about 35 positions requested. And our long-range plan assumed six added each year. So 18 over those three years is what the long-range plan assumes. But we know that those requests will be much higher. So we just need to be mindful of that going forward when we redo the long-range plan again for next year. And then for general fund capital requests for that same time period, we believe we'll have about 16 and a half million of capital requests during those three years. So for other funds, as we've talked about, fund balance concerns in cultural and recreation fund that we're mindful of, and we will address in each budget cycle in order to maintain a comfortable position. And decisions will have to be made each year to ensure that there is enough fund balance in each of those funds. Funding sources for capital improvements in public improvements fund. We know there'll be, currently there's $211 million of capital projects over the next 10 years in that fund. We don't anticipate there will be enough revenue to cover all of those projects. So there will have to be trade-offs and prioritization as we, as we go through the next 10 years. And of course, we're dealing with, you know, we, the 211 million is what we know right now. There will be cost increases over that timeframe, and we'll have to adjust accordingly. So for all funds, providing funding for new facilities and expanded services that are, that come with associated or increased population, that's something we need to keep in mind. And of course, providing funding for just maintaining the infrastructure that we have. So our next steps, we're here tonight with you for the first reading and first vote on this budget and the first public hearing. The second reading and second, second vote, second public hearing will be on Monday, November 17th. And Chris Beaver will be here to present that information to you all. And then by January 31st, we will publish the full budget book and file that budget with the state. And at that time, that is all I have, and we can take any questions that we have.
Start with Randy.
Well, I have a couple of them, so I don't want to keep every person. I'm trying to figure out which one I want to go over first. Okay, so on the budget, we know that we have safeguards that exist to ensure like designated funds can't be reallocated to other departments. And we understand that, but can you just give a general, a broad general explanation on how we can't take funds that are sitting over here and give them to this one?
Correct, yes. We cannot, for instance, transfer any funds from a special revenue fund like cultural fund and give that to Parks and Recreation Fund. Those, those funds are legally restricted to, you know, collect their own revenue and expend their, you know, pay for their operating. So we can't transfer between funds without council action. So while general fund does support some of those special revenue funds and transfers are made, we can't just take from one fund and put it into the other. That requires, it can be done with council action, but that's a very rare thing. So each bucket or fund is a standalone, and we track it very separately so that the funds aren't transferred co-convened.
Yeah, I have a clarity, but there are excise, for example, on stormwater where that cannot happen no matter what council wants, where we can't move monies, correct?
Well, transfers can be made. So for the excise tax fund, we, we do transfer from that into another capital.
But we can't use excise funds to buy a police car.
Correct, yes. There are legal restrictions on that money that say we cannot use it for maintenance or ongoing operations at all.
Yes.
No salaries can be paid out of there. So yes, individual funds have, are restricted for a specific purpose.
And on that same note, can you just give me a brief explanation of why it's important for us to keep the 20% into our reserves in our general fund? Where we don't just spend all that money to pay off all the debt and, yes?
Yes, we have, we currently have a high fund balance in the general fund, but we really are planning for the future. You know, as that fund balance slide demonstrated with the knowns in the long-range plan, just the things we know about today, will be under that 25% in the general fund balance. And as the town gets built out, as population starts to flatten, that will have an impact on our sales tax revenue, which we showed was 70% of general fund revenue. Excise tax is also an area that as development starts to flatten out and cease, that that funding stream will, will greatly reduce at some point. So we do need to plan for the future, keeping the general fund balance high. Now will shield us from that so that we have the resources to be able to repave our roads and hire police officers and all of that in the future. So we're saving for the future.
So the $250,000 decrease for the micro transit.
Yes.
This is, was there an opportunity with, with Douglas County to partner with, with them? I mean, should we have some more discussion on, on this, or is this for later?
Yes, that was the.
I mean, we have a study session already on it, which we, we talked about it in depth, so.
And for the pilot, that was our price tag for the pilot. There's future for year three and on.
I might have to ask questions.
Oh, I see, understood.
So maybe I'll make a comment. I'll save it for comments.
Okay, John, no questions, Randy, John?
Yeah, this is, I think, fourth time we've talked about budget this year.
Yes.
Yeah, so we've, we've talked about this at length. And I think 13th year in of over 50, I think, budget things. So, no, I just, we, we talk a lot, so I don't have any questions. I'll save it for comments.
Okay. Mark?
No question.
My question? My question real quick. So we see two numbers, two very big numbers. We have $173 million budget, yet we only have X in revenues. Can you explain that to myself and the public, please? When I, when I see a budget, you know, and I, and I see that, you know, we're only collecting this amount, but we have $173, what's the discrepancy there? Where's that delta go? Why do we have so much more money than we are only taking in this amount?
The delta could be that we're using reserves in different funds in order to pay for certain things next year. Largely one-time capital items. So for, for certain funds, we let the fund balance build up. So especially in the capital project funds, that will build up. And then if we decide to budget for a project like Salisbury Regional Park that has been, been saving up in reserves for a number of years, you'll see those expenditures far exceed the revenue coming in. But it's just because we're using reserves in certain funds to do that.
I think that's the, the point. So the budget is bigger than just the revenue intake of a certain year. The budget is, is also the, the funds that we manage and saving up for those projects. And those funds, like you said, it can have inflow, they can grow, and then they can be depreciated. But we always try to maintain a safe balance in those funds, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Now with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:46. Any member of the public wishing to address council on this item, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:46 and also close public hearing at 7:46 and go back to work, comments from council. I'll start with Tom.
Yeah, as councilman died, we, over this four or five times, very thorough. Especially love how we did the retreats with the department heads, so given their spiel. So, uh, talking numbers can be maybe sometimes boring, but I actually think it's one of the more fun things to discuss as the town grows.
Yeah.
Manages, so thank you, and your whole department through this.
Thank you, Tanya, Andrew.
Anna? Yeah, it's, there's a lot of moving parts. And, okay, at our last study session, we talked about the micro transit. It's, it's tough. It's like, this is, this is extra money when we hadn't planned for. But it was a great opportunity to partner, which we might not ever get again. So thank you for figuring that out. This, this has been a lot of work, so we appreciate you.
Thank you, Anna. Randy?
Yeah, I mean, I know, we hear, we hear when people think that they know how to run the town's budget better than the town people. And, you know, we hear that, you know, we've got all this money, and so why don't we pay off our debt? And I know in 2027, we are spending money to pay off the debt. But the big picture of that is, I think you said we're saving $3 to $4 million by paying it off earlier. So, you know, I think it, it needs to be recognized that our finance department's award-winning for over two decades. You guys know what you're doing, you know how to keep us. Is it three decades now? Three decades now. So, you know, when, when we hear the comments and people are only seeing a small little portion of a huge budget, I think it's important to point out the areas where we are very conservative, where we do have a long-range plan, where we do trust our finance department to make those decisions for us of like, yes, we're going to spend a large chunk in '27, but it's going to save us $3 to $4 million. So I, I appreciate the work, and I just want you to know that I know you guys hear the, the comments too. And so we, we understand it, and I appreciate personally everything you guys put into it, so thank you.
Thank you, very good job.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, you know, Parker's about 85% built out. We're slowing, if you will, over the next 15 years. We potentially might achieve close to 100% or full build-out. We have debt. It would be advantageous, in my opinion, to the town to, to have no debt going into that time period to create maximum flexibility. I kind of view it of a financial planner in, in real life. I, I, I kind of view it as retirement. So if. So if, if you can pay off your house or pay off all your debt, going into retirement gives you maximum flexibility. So, um, I, I have those conversations every day with, with clients. And, um, you know, to me, I think with the town, it's, it's no different. So we've been fortunate to be mindful that we need to pay down and pay off debt and also provide amenities and core needs such as roads, amenities such as recreation, parks, so the citizens can, can have enjoyment and get to work. And that is our charge here. It's overwhelming. There are always things that people come up to us and ask us, uh, please, can you, can you do this or do that? And we're, we're very mindful of that, but, uh, we only have so much money and we don't have a printing press like other governments at the federal level have. So we have to live within a balanced budget and this is what we, what we do. And we're trying to, um, use the money the most effective way we possibly can. And, um, thank you to our staff for helping us do so.
Laura?
No, 173.42 million is a, is a sophisticated number. And I think sometimes we forget that Parker is a sophisticated town. It offers many services to its citizen, um, and technology, public safety, public works, road widening, improvements, economic development, salaries, replacing buildings, replacing equipment. This all takes money and it takes a very talented team of Rhonda, Chris and Chris to keep this going. And so thank you for your very professional and sophisticated presentation, the two of you over the past month or so. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's important to note that, that you referenced it a couple of times, our 10-year plan. That's the most important thing that I think that I learned, you know, as a, as a council and as the mayor is that, you know, you add a stoveout, it doesn't just cost you one year, it costs you an FTE for perpetuity. Or, you know, you add this, it costs you every year on top of that. So it's not just adding. So you have to look and you have to project, you have to guess what, what those revenues are going to be down the road. And that's what you saw in that 10-year plan where we're gonna, our, our numbers are gonna dwindle. And we have to be, we have to be very frugal in planning for the future. So I appreciate that. This department is excellent at that year after year after year. And so truly appreciate that. With that, council, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.667, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.667 on first reading and to schedule a second reading for November 17th, 2025.
And a motion to have a second?
Second.
And a motion from Wilkes and a second from Dyak. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously, but in case you didn't get it up, you can join us in two weeks and we'll do it again. Next up, item 6B, open a public hearing for Riada North 1, Track T, Parker Water Sanitation District Well Water Filtration Building, site plan major amendment, non-residential. And presenting for my first time is Cynthia Liston, is it Ty or T?
T, thank you.
Good. Welcome and, uh, what is yours?
Stacy Nerdur. Stacy Nerdur, senior client. So, um, good evening, Mayor Rivero and members of the town council. I'll be presenting the Riada North filing one, Track T, Parker Water Sanitation District Well Water Filtration Building Site Plan Amendment Application Request. So, uh, location, this property is located on Parker Water Sanitation District easement located west of the Tallman Meadows Community Park on Riada North Track T. This tract is owned by the town Parker. The property is bound to the north by Riada North Idyllwild, single family and open space to the east by Riada North Idyllwild, uh, single family and Legend High School to the west by a lavender farm unincorporated Douglas County and to the south by low density unincorporated Douglas County. Subject property is located on the west end of Tallman Meadows Community Park. The property is owned by the town Parker. It's a 30-acre parcel that was developed jointly with Village Homes in 2005. Easements were granted to Parker Water and Sanitation District. Currently Parker Water Sanitation District has the Riada North Well House on the property. Site amendments are generally administrative approvals. This approval requires planning commission recommendation and town council approval because improvements are proposed on town on property. On the left is the existing wellhouse and then on the right on the slide is the proposed water filtration annex. This is the south elevation.
So just again, for clarity, excuse me, if you could go back one slide. The red point maker is showing the park and not the site. The site is directly adjacent to the existing wellhouse, correct?
Correct. Site plan, Parker Water Sanitation District is proposing to construct a 2,633 square foot filtration annex building adjacent to their existing wellhouse to improve drinking water quality for the community. The site has been reviewed and is in compliance with required setbacks and height requirements. Design and materials, four different, uh, masonry types were proposed to break up vertical massing. Due to the nature of the filtration process, there are no windows, but darker brick blocks the size of windows have been added to the public facing facades to contribute to the elevated design of the structure. Also, the site plan includes additional landscaping and architectural features to the proposed filtration annex that complements the existing building. Recommendation, staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined the project is consistent with the master plan, meets the LDO and development design standards. All referral agency comments have been addressed. The public notice requirements have been satisfied. Therefore, staff and the planning commission are recommending that town council approve the Riada North filing one, Track T, water filtration, site plan amendment with conditions in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. We also have Deana Davidson with Tetra Tech. She's, she's here to present a short presentation on the filtration process that might answer some of your technical questions.
Awesome. We're gonna wait for Deana just a second and, uh, last staff questions first. So any questions for staff?
No.
And staff? Randy for staff?
Just to clarify, this is, um, there's been a building that's been there for many, many, many years. This is kind of expanding it and making it larger and to equip the thing or is this, or is this separate?
It's a separate building, um, adjacent to it. There'll be, there's underground, um, piping that will connect the two buildings, but there's two separate structures, um, adjacent to each other on the property.
Okay, thank you.
It's how, I mean, I saw the picture of the building, but so this new one's gonna be 2,000 some square feet. What is, how big is the existing one?
I guess my staff report, I think it was 1,000.
Does it say?
No, it's guessing. I guess to be hit.
I don't need exactly, but it's roughly the same size, I think.
Um, it's a little bit smaller.
Existing building's a little bit smaller.
1,690 square feet. So, um, yeah, so it's, um, a few hundred feet, square feet smaller.
And it's just so we need to, we need to expand the capacity.
This is a filtration system specifically to answer the red water.
Uh, it's iron and manganese. The next presentation, we'll kind of clarify that, but there's been some color issues and, um, this is the fourth project of the town.
Then the buildings do different things. So one is a wellhouse and this will be a filtration.
So yeah, the wellhouse, um, pulls the water from the ground and this is a building that filters the water.
Thank you.
John?
No questions.
Laura, questions for staff?
No questions.
All right, with that, we welcome public, uh, Parker Water and Sand. Or, I'm sorry, Tetra Tech, excuse me.
On behalf of Parker Water.
Right, good evening, mayor and town council. It's a pleasure to be here to talk about the Riada North, uh, filtration project on behalf of Parker Water. So you're familiar with the location, um, some background on the project party source. It does have iron and manganese in it, as we were just talking about, which under the right hydraulic conditions, that can precipitate and cause colored water issues, red, orange, black, uh, colored water. So around 2017 and 2018, Parker Water and Sanitation undertook a filtration program to better mitigate the colored water concerns. The past method of controlling was with chemical sequestration. That would eventually let go of those particles in the distribution system under those hydraulic conditions and turn the water color. So, uh, with physical removal, with the addition of filters, that cannot happen. Once we get all of that iron and manganese physically out of the system, colored water concerns will be eliminated. That's the ultimate goal here. So just to give you an idea of the removals we're talking about, Riada North, the project we're talking about, that's the first line here, the previous four that have been completed. We're talking about an annual contribution of iron and manganese to the system of 125 pounds from Riada North. So that's what we're gonna be pulling out in the filter, um, three pounds of manganese. So obviously it's a major contributor, even though it's not the largest wellhouse, it's a major contributor of iron to the distribution system. The district went through a very strategic prioritization plan where to put money first to have the biggest impact positively to the distribution and water quality for rate payers. They've gone through kind of this prioritization and that's where we are today, is Riada North and pulling water, um, out, going through the filters, disinfecting and then to distribution. So this is an inside view of that new building. There's not much to it. It's, um, mechanical, uh, gravity filters. So there's two filter cells there, a new chemical storage room that actually, uh, should reduce chemical delivery and storage to the site. So less impact to those, um, parkgoers next door. And just an isometric view for a feel of what those filters look like in 3D.
All right, I'll go back for questions, technical questions for Tetra Tech. Laura, anything?
No, thank you.
John? Randy?
Um, the pump system and, cause you had mentioned the parkgoers next door and obviously there's residents around there, is it loud?
No, this is all passive. Yep, so the pump, the groundwater pump that comes up right now, there's enough, enough, no change to that.
Okay, so it's not gonna cause a disturbance to the residents?
Same pressure, it just, we're piping it to the filter instead of straight to disinfection.
Perfect, thank you.
Anna, any questions? No, no questions. Thank you, I appreciate your, your presentation. Sorry, we didn't have more questions, sorry. It just goes to you, how, how good your presentation is.
Anytime you put in sequestration, you have us.
All right, with that, we'll open up public comment at 8:02. Any member of the public wishing to address council on this specific item? Make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and the hearing at 8:02 and go back for comments from council. Laura, please.
Well, um, great idea, always need to improve the water for our residents.
Todd, please. No, I mean, I'm happy to, um, partner work with Parker Water and Sand. We need water, water is essential. So we need to make sure that, um, that citizens have, have a opinion.
Thank you, John. Randy?
As much as I love the pink water deposits and always have, I'm excited to be able to move away from them and, you know, the 125 pounds additional filter, that's, that's phenomenal. So I'm excited about this and I like that it's not gonna cause a disturbance to our residents around there or parkers. So thank you guys.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm happy to see the investment and supporting.
And Todd?
I'm also supporting.
Yeah, I just want to say a huge appreciation to Parker Water and Sand, um, responsive to the citizens. Glad to be a partners in this and, uh, you know, we definitely have some red water and, and Parker Water and Sand listens and they're, they're answering it, um, through incredible investment and we appreciate that here in the town a partner. So thank you for that. With council, with that council, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve subject to the conditions recommended by the planning commission as noted in the request for town council action form.
No motion, do a second?
Second.
And a motion from Hefta, a second from Wilkes. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, that concludes our public hearings. Next up, item seven, ordinances. First up, 7A, the Denver Pope product, property annexation drainage easements. Part of that is a one, ordinance number 1.665 on second reading. I assume this is one presentation, correct?
Yes.
And A2, 7A2, resolution number 25-076. Sorry, the ordinance, let me state the ordinance, apologies. A bill for an ordinance conveying certain real property by quick claim deed to Denver Pope Family Limited Partnership. And then the resolution number 25-076, a resolution accepting the conveyance of a drainage easement from the Denver Pope Family Limited Partnership for permanent concrete drainage pipelines. And we will sit in pause while we wait for our images. And let Tetra Tech, let's fill it. No, unfortunately. Well, Chris is here. Chris, Chris can tell you.
You know his favorite words.
For permanent concrete drainage pipeline. Chris?
Too many security doors to get through here, so. The mayor and council tonight will be talking to you about the Denver Pope annexation drainage easements. So quick background, in December, or I should be November of last year, two years ago now, we have been doing annexation agreement for the Pope property. The Pope property required upon completion of the Dransville Road extension project drainage pond. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Yes.
The town will release any and all easements pertaining to the drainage pond located in Track B of the Flat Acres Market Platte. Flat Acres Market is located on the south side of Plainmount Road, east of Dransville Road intersection. And Track B was formerly used for stormwater infrastructure, there was ponds, pipes, things like that on the property. With the Dransville extension project, we eliminated this and piped it all the way to a detention pond at the northwest corner of the new bridge. So this is Track B vicinity map. It's kind of an L-shaped parcel that goes along the west side of the Flat Acres Development currently today. And then there was drainage ponds that went to an outfall in Cherry Creek. To fulfill this commitment, we're talking about executing a quick claim deed for Track B via an ordinance. The quick claim deed would relinquish any and all interest in easements that we have in Track B. But we would, during the review, we determined there was a problem with big hanging at all. So we actually have a step that we're gonna add back in to, for a pipe that we built with the project. So this, this large reinforced concrete pipe, it's a 66-inch diameter pipe that we built to transmit these flows to the new pond. So five and a half foot diameter inside in this pipe. Now what we found is a proposed road that's gonna go along the south side of the Flat Acres Development. It's curved, the road, the pipe's straight, and a pinch point in the curve there. So the right way to this future road, which will ultimately go to Parker Road, was dedicated, but due to the curvature and the straightness of the pipe, we had a pinch point. So where this is, is the future roadway is showing green, this is a rightway that was dedicated to us. Ultimately, this road will kind of sneak around the north side of the KOA Tower and go all the way out to Parker Road to serve both the Flat Acres Development and the future development that's gonna happen at the KOA property. A little area in orange is a drainage easement that we have to get, it's small, not a very big area that we have to get. We'll do the quick claim deed and directly thereafter, accept the replacement drainage easement. An ordinance is required to approve the quick claim deed and debate track B easement interest back to the original landowner, the Denver Pope Family Limited Partnership. Step number two is a resolution required to accept conveyance of replacement drainage easement. And staff recommends approval of both the ordinance and the resolution to fulfill the obligation of the November of 2023 annexation agreement. This is actually the final step in that agreement, and it will be buttoned up after this step.
No.
Let's start with questions.
My only question before I saw the photos was, is it going to, in fact, or impair the taco truck? But seeing as though the taco truck's on the other side.
The taco truck's very safe, John. So that was the number one question I had when we started the Transville Extension Project last year, was, what about the taco truck?
I mean, citizens just need that answer.
I need that answer too, I live that place, so.
Laura, questions?
No questions.
Randy, questions?
See, mine, I was worried about the endangered mice, are they still protected and okay down there by the creek?
They are, they're in there.
They're jumping everywhere.
We actually got, with the annexation, we got the mouse service property dedicated to us, I can't remember how many acres it was, I can get back to that with that, but it was, we received that and it's protected for the mouse.
Perfect.
Any questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
What type of tacos do you prefer?
All.
All? All right, without any questions, we'll open up public comment at 8:11. Any member of the public wishing to address council on this ordinance or this resolution, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:11, and go back for comments from council. Todd?
No, just pretty straightforward in their group.
Anne?
Yep, I'm glad to see that it's all getting buttoned up.
Randy?
I feel like these guys are just as invested as you are, so I think it's wonderful that you actually said the words out loud, that this is the last part.
Todd?
Yeah, never, this has been a long one, so I'm glad we can finally put this one to bed and move forward, and thank you for all your work throughout the years, Chris.
And Laura?
I didn't know Chris was leaving.
No, he's.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
That's a big one.
No comment.
No, I appreciate it. Anytime we could give easements back to the public, I think it's outstanding, and they're willing to work with us and get that little bit of a bend there, and it'd be good, then this project will be done. So thank you, Chris, appreciate your work. With that, council, I'd entertain a motion on first, ordinance number 1.665, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.665 on second reading.
Second.
A motion from Hendricks, and a second from Hefta. Hendricks?
Yes.
Berantin?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Dak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next, I'd entertain a motion on resolution number 25-076, please.
I move to approve resolution number 25-076 as part of the revenue.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Hendricks, and a second from Wilkes. Hendricks?
Yes.
Berantin?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Dak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously. We appreciate the 7A, and next up, 7B, ordinance number 90.335.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the second amendment to agreement regarding design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Cottonwood Meadows Tributary, agreement number 21-05.15B, project number 108520, lying between urban drainage, excuse me, urban drainage and flood control district, DVA Mile High Flood District, and the town of Parker presented today. Mr. Mike Grabcheck?
Yes, sir.
Or yours?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, I appreciate it. I know that title is always a mouthful.
Got tomorrow after this.
So a good warm-up. So this ordinance is for the approval of an amendment to an interregional agreement for additional construction funding of the Cottonwood Meadows Tributary project. So this project is located off the western bank of Cherry Creek, it's within the town's Cottonwood subdivision, so it's an older area of the town. The limits are bounded upstream by Jordan Road and downstream by the confluence with Cherry Creek. All proposed improvements are in the drainage tract owned by the Cottonwood Metro District and within a drainage easement dedicated to the town. No additional easements or right-of-way are going to be needed. As I kind of mentioned before, the Cottonwood Meadows Tributary is one of the town's older drainage ways, it was originally constructed in the mid-'80s, and the latest drainage study was performed in 2001. This project originally intended to ensure there is adequate flood conveyance through this reach, as well as looking for additional opportunity for maintenance improvements and incorporating it into the Mile High Flood District Maintenance Eligibility Program. We determined kind of early on that we do not have any flooding concerns, so that was a really good thing to discover there, and so we were able to pare down some of the improvements. That being said, this project is going to provide some water quality type four bay improvements and allow our maintenance crews to access and eliminate kind of the stamping water, scowl holes, and that kind of make their way through this small little segment. Additionally, this is a project that we currently have undermatched with the Mile High Flood District, so this additional funding is going to primarily be used for construction contingency and will allow us to come up to a full 50-50% match. This allows these additional Mile High Flood District funds to then be transferred after this project is complete to another, maybe 50-50% already matched, so then we can use an overmatched project essentially. So with that, we're not proposing any new town funds with this IGA, it's just some additional funds from the flood district to get our full 50-50% match. So and as such, staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Laura, questions?
No questions.
John, questions?
No questions.
Randy?
Well, so you said the IGA for the flood district for a full 50-50 match, what are we currently at?
So we are at, we are about 175,000 away from 50-50, so we have 175,000 more into the project than the flood district. I think that puts us at like a 43, 57, something like that, off the top of my head.
600,000.
600,000, that's how much we have.
Okay, thank you.
Anne?
No questions.
Todd?
No more.
So this improvement, we have a, we have a straight line, water just runs right through there. This improvement will encourage vegetation and encourage an asset for the community?
Correct, so it'll be a smaller rifle pool type system with more select riparian vegetation on the edges. It'll still be mowed kind of shorter along the edge of the fence lines for kind of a fire break, and then along the trail, as you typically see, but the intent is to try and let the reach grow out a little bit more and get some much better species there.
Look, I don't nature filter a little bit.
Exactly.
Awesome. Thank you. With that, we'll open up public comment at 8:17. Any member of the public wishing to address council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:17, and move on to council comments. Todd, if you'd have?
No, yeah, pretty straightforward.
Anne?
I've seen similar projects in other municipalities, and I know, I love the fact that we're taking something that has function, but we're adding more to it, so people can enjoy it.
Thank you. Randy?
Yeah, I echo that, I'm so glad it's not concrete walls everywhere, so thank you.
Thank you, Randy. John?
Yeah, no, I mean, urban drainage, Mile High Flood, always a great partner, always appreciate bringing money back to partner so we can improve our town with other companies.
Thank you, John. Laura?
Appreciate the great relationship with the Mile High Flood District.
Thank you, Laura. With that, council, entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.335.2, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.335.2 on second reading.
A motion, a second?
A second.
A motion from Wilkes, and a second from Berantin. Hendricks?
Yes.
Berantin?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Dak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously, including 7B. We're non-ordinance, all right, number 7C, ordinance number 9.339.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the second amendment to the agreement regarding design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Newland Gulch at Recreation Drive, agreement number 21-05.23B, project number 108504, lying between urban drainage and the flood control district, DVA Mile High Flood District, the town of Parker, and Douglas County, presented again, Mr. Mike Grabcheck.
Excellent. Well, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members. This ordinance is to approve an IGA between the town, Douglas County, and the Mile High Flood District to fund drainage way improvements along Newland Gulch, adjacent to Recreation So this project is located within both the town of Parker and Douglas County, and so as such, it's a collaborative effort between the two jurisdictions and additional funding and support from the flood district. More specifically, the project reaches shown here is along Newland Gulch from Lincoln Avenue to a point close to the baseball fields, just past the large drop structure. Although the project corridor is primarily within the Challenger Park County area, it does provide a secondary fire access to the Parker Recreation Center, and we do have possibly additional small development going in along Recreation Road, or rather, Rec Drive. Sorry. Additionally, this impacts the regional trail access by Challenger Park and commercial traffic from the Stonegate Shopping Center. As a part of this and bringing in the county, this project has expanded a little bit, there are two Mile High Flood District maintenance projects that are kind of being tagged along with it, including the replacement of one of our large drop structures just upstream of Jordan, kind of, show just at the south end of that red patch there, and then additionally through the Stonegate Community HOA district there, and that'll provide some good, both aesthetic and functionality improvements for those county residents, but it'll fit in nicely with this project. So primarily, this project seeks to improve the crossing at Rec Drive, we're looking at two 20-foot by two and a half to three-foot boxes, we'll be providing a crosswalk connection between Challenger Park and the Newland Gulch Trail, as well as the commercial, and we're going to reduce the, eliminate or eliminate the need for road closures by town staff, and also parking lot closures by county staff. And we're also going to be looking for feasible ways to treat some of that Red Drive runoff before it gets into Newland Gulch. So a preliminary design was reached and completed in 2022, funded by the town and Mile High Flood District, so we have now brought in the county, and then we are bringing in additional county and flood district funds with this second IGA amendment. So with this amendment, the town will not be contributing anything, but the county and the flood district will each be contributing 150,000. And we do plan on contributing more for construction now. As such, staff recommends approval of ordinance 9.339.2.
Thank you, Ma. Randy, questions?
So up there, when it said 100 from the town, 300 from county, and 400 from the flood district, but nothing for this part of the IGA, so when does the 100 from us come into play?
That was a previous 2021 or 2022.
Okay, so that's already been paid out, so this, so we're done with our contributions to this after today?
Correct, we're done with our design contributions, and we'll be putting more money when we get to construction.
Perfect, thank you.
Anne?
Did you say already when this is supposed to start?
2027 for that downstream major construction, the drop structure just upstream of Lincoln will likely be 2026 in kind of conjunction with the contractor leaving the Lincoln Bridge and roadway improvements, so we've been coordinating with them on the timing of that.
Thanks.
Todd, no questions. John?
No questions.
Laura?
No questions.
No questions from council, we'll open up public comment on this specific item at 8:24. Any member of the public wishing to address council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:24, and go back for closing comments. Laura, anything?
Oh, no, thank you for your work on this.
John?
I'm going to miss the Texas Crossing. I mean, that was the funnest thing, when we had lots of rain, just go there and go slightly above the speed limit and hit that.
We call that a hazard, John.
I call it fun.
Randy?
No, I appreciate the work on this, and I like that, you know, you've got the contribution coming from not just the county, but from the flood district as well, so thank you.
Anne?
Yeah, if you can eliminate that pretty picture. Yeah, sure. It's great, thank you.
Todd? No, anytime, water quality, we talked, I think we talked, was it two years ago, three years ago, this came in front of us, and, yeah, that parking lot is just bleeding straight into the Cherry Creek right now, so I'm anxious to get this done, so thank you for the hard work. With that, I would entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.339.2 on second reading.
A motion from, a motion from Hefta, and a second from Hendricks? Hendricks?
Yes.
Berantin?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Dak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next in front of you, item 7D, ordinance number 9.394 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the agreement regarding design and construction of the drainage and flood control improvements of Cherry Creek at Main Street, agreement number 25-08.17, project number 110510, lying between urban drainage and flood control district, DVA Mile High Flood District, and the town of Parker, and again, and lastly, Mike Grabcheck.
I think that one would even faster. Well, thank you again, this ordinance is to approve an IGA between the town of Parker and the Mile High Flood District to fund drainage way improvements along Cherry Creek in the vicinity of Main Street. So this project is generally located between the recent Transville Extension Project and the north side of the Trailside Apartment Complex, located on the northeast corner of Main Street and Cherry Creek there. Due to the really large length of this project, it's anticipated that we're going to be phasing these improvements. We have kind of conceptual phases shown here on this map, or a convention, mostly equal reaches, but this IGA will fund a full conceptual design, which will determine the true extent of each of the reaches, as makes sense for construction access and planning. So the proposed project will target small, isolated areas of bank degradation rather than large-scale channel work, so we'll have minimal disturbance or minimal, no disturbance between select, you know, bank or channel drop structure improvements. This will be a good comparison to what's downstream of the Transville Bridge Extension along the Flat Acres Farm Community or Property. You know, it's actually kind of hard to see until you go down there, a lot of the work we've done, so this would be very similar type of work, isolated improvements, not full channel clearing. Also, we're going to be, sorry, fixing a lot of kind of trail issues in areas where they kind of come adjacent to the creek. We have some kind of foresight drainage along with areas of the creek that have kind of migrated along the trail edges that are causing some undercutting. I think there's a better plan that will kind of bring a better human connection element to this area, and also kind of just help with a lot of nuisance, things that our staff has to deal with, like sediment removal and snow removal, will make that a little bit easier. And then finally, this reach has quite a few beavers throughout it, and that's not inherently a problem or anything, but we are noticing a lot of kind of larger down trees. So with this project, we're going to be kind of monitoring the riparian vegetation and kind of see if there's any sort of select tree protection we could provide for maybe some of the higher value trees, and maybe kind of deter them towards more of the lower value trees. And that'll just be kind of explored in that conceptual design. So this project is currently planned for design and permitting through '25 and '26, and then anticipated construction in the first phase in '27 and '28. Funding is being shared equally right now between the town and the Mile High Flood District, that each of us contributing $100,000. This is within our 2025 approved budget, our contribution, but it is also likely that the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority will be a part of it. part of reading to this project as we go into further design and construction. With that, staff recommends approval of ordinance number 9.394 to formalize the IGA for this week.
John, any questions?
No questions.
Laura?
No questions.
Brady?
No questions.
Yeah?
You said the beavers?
Oh, yes.
Oh, so how do you, how do you deter them?
Natty.
You can do natty. There's also like a sandpaper like paint you can put on it, although that's not the, you can kind of get it brown, but you can see. And those are kind of the two. I think the paint is actually a little more effective, although the kind of steel chicken wire contraption can also be effective as well.
Is there any opportunities for like some sort of a zoo?
Yes, yeah. And, you know, there are a couple of areas where it comes close to the east-west trail, so.
Todd? So we, obviously, we do see pooling, we see a flood over our creek. Is that pooling due to nature's engineers, or is that pooling due to irrigation, or what is it?
A lot of it is unfortunately due to the constrictions of the RCCC facility and then the Main Street roadway crossing. And then we also have the confluence of Sulphurville, which kind of come in all at that same area. So there's kind of a hydraulic pinch point that causes the more frequent flooding, but I do think there's some work in that area that could at least get the trail a little bit out of the more affected areas, or at least make it more maintainable.
Okay.
Our maintenance staff has been kind of building a wall along the edge there, and so we could do something more formal, essentially.
Okay. Right. So for further questions, we'll open up public comment at 8:31. Any member of the public wishing to address council on all things beaver? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 8:31, and go back for closing comments. Hendricks?
I agree.
Barrington?
Yeah, thank you.
Wilkes?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Anything to add? Back, Hefta?
And support.
Any, so with that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.394 on second reading, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.394 on the second.
Second.
I have a motion from Hendricks and a second from Hefta. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Back, Hefta? And that passes unanimously. Council, next up, again, next up in front of you, item 7E, ordinance number 9.395 on second reading. A bill for an ordinance to approve the 23rd Judicial District Regional Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC Memorandum of Understanding by in between the Town of Parker and the Regional ICAC Unit. Presenting today, Commander Ken LaBelle, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and I am Ken LaBelle, Commander of Parker Police Department. I'm here to discuss and give you some background on the ordinance to approve the 23rd Judicial District Regional Internet Crimes Against Children, which is referred to as ICAC, throughout this memorandum of understanding by in between the Town of Parker and the Regional ICAC Unit. This MOU formalizes the agreement between Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Parker Police Department, Lone Tree Police Department, Cass Rock Police Department, Albert County Sheriff's Office, Elizabeth PD, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, Lyman Police Department, and the Office of the District Attorney for the 23rd Judicial District to participate in the Regional Internet Crimes Against Children unit. Purpose of this faulty agency unit is to investigate, disrupt, prosecute individuals engaged in technology facilitated crimes against children within the 23rd Judicial District. Since the majority of the parties to the MOU are having their chief law enforcement officer execute the agreement, the ordinance also delegates the authority to the Town of Parker Chief of Police to execute the agreement on behalf of the town, in addition to approving this MOU. Obviously, the staff recommends this unit, and for the chief to sign off on that.
Any questions? Thank you, Commander. Appreciate that. Questions? We'll start with Council and Hefta, please.
Yeah, but do you know approximately when this idea came up to have?
I've been working on it for two years.
Oh, great.
So the internet, you know, crimes against children, you know, obviously, it's been going on for a very long time, and it's nitpicky out of springs that gets all the tips, and usually those tips come out to each.
I'm sorry, what was that acronym?
The National Center for Children.
And CFC?
No, no, no. It's a, the national.
Center for Exploitation.
Yeah, for missing and exploitation of children. It's nitpicky, it's another acronym they use. But a lot of the tips come in there, and then they get filtered out to all the agencies. And when they come in, then we work on those. But we've seen an uprising, and we just see it as a very big need for all the agencies within the 23rd to work together so we can put people that are just dedicated to it. And that was our goal. Obviously, it takes a little bit to do, but we finally found a place and a real huge need for it, so now we're trying to get this MOU put together for.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, questions?
Nope.
Randy, questions?
How often will the MOU need to be renewed?
It's, is it set up like?
I don't think there's a specific term in it. That's only a big term of participation.
Okay, so.
It's much like MOUs, sort of like SWOT impact that we currently have.
Perfect. So basically, if council approves today, and then the chief makes it happen and work it.
Right. At any time, anybody can pull up.
Perfect.
Yeah, questions?
Questions.
Other questions? Commander, you touched on my question. Can you talk about the other MOUs and the other multi-force units that we do have? This would be similar to, you said Impact.
So Impact, which also does some of the drug stuff, but they're more of, we have the Impact, we have SWOT, we have the MOUs, I believe, for.
No, I don't think so. We've talked about it, but we haven't.
But not a, not a new practice, you would say. This is something that we've done with our neighboring partners.
Yes. Now, as the 23rd being its own judicial district, we, you know, now we have to kind of go through and do our MOUs again from what was the ATS.
Thank you. Seeing none, questions from council? We'll open up public comment at 8:36. Any member of the public wishing to address council on this ordinance for memorandum of understanding? Please make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:36 and go back for closing comments. Todd?
I agree.
Yeah?
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't see this problem lessening, so appreciated.
Randy? I'm sorry.
He's a burden.
I know. I'm sorry. Randy? No, I mean, the fact that you've been working on it for two years, obviously, we would like to see stuff happen faster, but we know it takes time to coordinate with everybody else and get all of these in place, so I appreciate the work you've done on this.
Thank you. Sorry. John? And Laura?
I'm in support.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.395 on second reading, please.
And I will adjourn. Go ahead.
Laura?
Ordinance number 9.395 on second reading. Second?
Left on second, from Wilkes. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
And back? Yes. Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Commander. Appreciate your waiting. Next in front of us, item 7F, ordinance number 9.396 on second reading. A bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement by in between the Town of Parker and E470 Public Highway Authority regarding the Parker Road ramp project. Presented again, Mr. Chris Hudson.
Navy, Mayor, and Council. Little background on this, the Town of Parker has been contemplating a connection from E470 Parker Road off-ramp to southbound 20-mile road for over a decade. 2019 Parker Road quarter plan identified a need for complete operational mobility improvement between E470 and Lincoln Avenue on Parker Road as an important component of Parker Area's long-term transportation plan. 2019 plan identified the, what E470 called northbound, but I call it eastbound because it's eastbound for Parker. Off-ramp connection as a connection for mobility is to provide alternate routes to travel in public. We'll show a vicinity map here in a second when we're talking about. And a portion of the proposed improvements is located within E470's right way, and discussion with E470 staff has been ongoing for several years. So what this is, we're looking to do is that you come off eastbound, let me call it, off-ramp to Parker Road, come down curving, connects directly to Parker Road, but there would be a off-ramp off the off-ramp, so to speak, on the southbound 20-mile road to give people some options to get around this part of the town. Giving people options is important, and this is a contemplation of four-lane 20-mile road was, we have the right of way for it, and it's been discussed with every development that's occurred through here. So background, a little bit more on this. The town engaged a consulting engineer in 2019 to create a 30% design. That was wrapped up in mid-2020. Due to budget cuts caused by COVID-19, the pandemic, design or potential partnership opportunity with E470 was advanced. We've continued to have discussions ongoing with E470 staff, and in 2024, there was renewed interest in this project. The town requested construction funding via letter in November of last year. The design effort was restarted in the fall, which in September came before council, August or September, I can't remember, I think it was September. And E470 is currently working on their 2026 budget. They've appropriated $2 million in this project, which is roughly about 50% of the estimated cost of this project from a partnering standpoint. Some of the funding IGA's details, the town will be responsible for design, with review input from E470 during the process. The town will be responsible for managing the bidding and construction, so E470 will be involved with committing and given the opportunity to review the chosen bid. So this is back to the lowest responsible bidder. E470 wants the opportunity to review that, to make sure we have a quality contractor. E470's $2 million in construction funding will be remitted within 30 days of date the town notifies E470 that we anticipate award of a construction contract. The funding for E470 will be returned if the construction contract is not awarded by December 31, 2030. So it's got a further long leash to it. We're going to continue, we just restart the design, we're going to continue to move forward this. The maintenance of the improvements is not included in this IGA, but will be determined as a design advances, and will be incorporated into a future separate IGA amendment. Actually, started a review of that a year ago, and this will be incorporated into that when it comes to you, probably next year. With that, an ordinance is required to approve this IGA. Are there any questions I would be able to answer?
Randy?
Two of them. So if E470 appropriated 2 million for us, and you're saying that's about 50%, so this council would essentially have to approve an additional 2 million if that happened?
That's in the 2026 budget request, I think, was one of the blind items that you saw tonight.
It was the first one.
The first one?
Yeah, the first.
Oh, first presentation.
Yeah, first, line item number first presentation.
Okay.
First, first, top one.
And then with the businesses that are there, have we had any contact with them or input with them on the proposed off-off-ramp? I'm assuming it's called an off-off-ramp?
We have not any current discussions with them. A lot of this development occurred before or during the pandemic, so we'll be reaching out to them again with an open house, inviting businesses, and.
More specifically, the condos that are right there is what I'm really referring to.
I have not had any discussions, but the condos dedicated right away for this widening was part of the obligation when they developed. So the original developer was aware of it. I cannot tell you if the current owners are aware of this off-ramp connection.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah?
No questions. Thank you.
Todd, any questions?
The main purpose of this is to help alleviate traffic on Parker Road, right?
Exactly. So with the work that we did last year, what we call the North Parker Road Operational Improvements, there was a phase two. This is part of phase two, to give people options and actually improve southbound Parker Road, to add a through lane from E470 all the way to Lincoln, like we did on the northbound side. This offered here is people some options to get around in this area. One of the big ones that we see quite a bit is people coming off of E470, and might be going to the Aurora developments, north and east to Parker, roughly five miles to the car trailer exit. Well, if you're in between, and you're going to get off, and what you do is you come south, and you have to go all the way across all the lanes of Parker Road, which are, the section of Parker Road, just for reference, Dave Aiden recently did some traffic counts, it's approaching 80,000 cars a day south of E470. So all those cars that are going trying to go up the Pine Lane to go up, they have to weave across all those lanes of traffic. This will actually give them the option to come down 20-mile, make a left at the Pine Lane signal to go directly east, and limit a lot of that weaving motion that is problematic to moving cars. There's some other options too, just to give people more options. And 20-mile road itself is a somewhat underutilized road in the Parker roadway network. Getting people the opportunity to use that to get through the Parker area to get as a parallel route to Parker Road is important.
Thank you. Todd? Laura? Any questions?
So that's going to allow northbound and southbound, right?
Or?
Actually getting on E470.
No, just, they'll just be on the off-ramp to be able to come down and basically to go southbound. There will be no northbound connection.
Okay, southbound.
Only south.
All right. Todd? So my other question, and didn't really touch on it, so also taking away that, that high-speed turn, you're putting a little bit of a hindrance there, slow traffic entry Parker Road, correct?
Yeah, so one of the things that, through the study that came up was the desire to slow traffic and have it continue more pedestrians along Parker Road, because pedestrians have to, will have to cross at that location to get the traffic to slow down as they come off E470 off-ramp on the Parker Road.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. With that, we'll open up public comment at 8:46. Any member of the public wishing to address council on the button hook? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:46, and go back for closing comments. Todd, anything to add?
Just, it's a small project, but I think will have a big impact, so I'm looking forward to this. I agree.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'll take 20-mile as far as I can go, just to avoid Parker Road now, so I think it, I can see how that would, I like 20-mile. I like, it's a great road to travel on, so.
Thank you. Randy?
I mean, I like the, I like the concept of it. I obviously have a little bit of concerns about the residential there with that, but I think on the flip note of that, the businesses that are there would probably very much appreciate having another access to them, so. But right now, I think it's good to move forward with the IGA. I'm curious to see what comes up with the discussions from the open house.
So? No, I mean, this is sort of a long time coming. Appreciate the efforts that our staff has gone through, that E470 is willing to partner with us, you know, as Chris indicated, anything we can do to get people off Parker Road, specifically create a safety improvement for our neighbors in the north in Aurora trying to get home, I think it's a win-win, so appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Laura?
No, John's comments. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate it, to Brady's point, I see this as a boon to some stagnant commercial property. I see this hopefully incentivizing and maybe starting a little fire over there to get some properties developed. Also, to the residents, I, you know, I see this as, it's a straight off-ramp to your house. You know, if you're a commuter, I think it's a pretty good shot. And, yeah, I think it's definitely a boon to our, to our, our network and overtaxed Parker Road. So, well done, Steph. With that, I would maintain a motion on ordinance number 5.33.4 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.396 on second reading.
Thank you, John. Second.
Second.
Appreciate that, John. I have a motion and a second. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Back?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
We're just really trying to.
Next up?
We're getting punchy.
We're getting punchy.
Next up, item 7G, that would be ordinance number 5.33.4 on second reading. Mr. Dave Ayden.
All right.
A bill for an ordinance to amend section 10.06.020 of the Town Parker Municipal Code concerning the adoption of the 2023 edition of the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices for Streets and Highways. Sir, the floor is yours.
Mayor and council, it's my bible. So thank you for, thank you for your time tonight. Talked a little bit about the MUTCD. This is a document that is published by the federal government of federal highways. We are required to adopt it, so if you wanted to stop the presentation right there, we can. It's part of our municipal code. In my tenure, we've gone through three different versions of this book. But what is the MUTCD? It is the federal standard for all traffic control devices, signals, signs, road markings, school zones, work zones. Anything that a driver sees in terms of signage, regulatory warning, all comes out of this book. And periodically, the book is updated, the latest thoughts, the latest on how to do things safer and better. Start from 1935 to 2009, those have been the editions that we've gone through. This is the latest edition that's, that's come out. We are now on the 11th edition. I had the millennial edition in 2000, 2003, and 2009, so not quite as old as some. Why does it matter? Well, let's see, do you like yellow stop signs? Do you like yield signs that don't look like yield signs? This was, this was our nation years and years ago. There was no rhyme or reason to how things were done. The manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices tied everything together. So major updates in the 2023 edition, and I'll use that interchangeably with the 11th edition. RRFBs, which we use quite a bit around this town, were only experimental before. We had, the feds finally blinked and said, okay, everyone can use them, but they still weren't in the book. So those are in the book now. Accessible pedestrian signals, for example, the ones that talk to you at the intersections, those were not in the book before, they are now. So we have some more flexibility. These are just a few of the, I mean, many pages, but we have more flexibility on warrant studies in regards to crash analysis now. So there's some good things that are, that are coming with the book. But we need to adopt it, and that's where we're sitting.
That's great.
What is that?
That used to be a traffic signal head.
Used to, it's been worn out. All right, questions for Mr. Hayden, Hendricks?
I love it. All right.
So it had been updated in 2009, and then 2023 was the next?
Yeah, this was, this was one of the longer intervals between new manuals. The feds, there's, there's a bunch of committees that meet, there are people that are specifically bike experts, specifically pet experts, specific, they all have their subcommittees, and this particular edition took a long time. We kept like, is it going to be in 15? Is it going to be in 17? Is it? And we're finally there. So this was published originally for final comment, I think, in 2021. And then some more iterations came through, now we're at this semifinal edition.
So you just like sitting there.
Yay!
And you have to choose a cover. Brady, questions?
No questions up here.
John, questions?
Is it available hardback as well?
Right now, I was lucky to get even a printed version. Most everybody likes the PDF now, but I can't put my sticky tabs on the pages I care about.
You have audio book for Laura, questions? With that, we'll open up public comment at 8:53. Anybody remember the public wishing to address council, looking at the two members of the public left? Sorry, Chris. And seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:53 and move on for final status. Todd, anything to add?
I approve.
Yay!
I support. Anne.
Yeah, I'm excited for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was lucky not to get to see a presentation by you already this morning, and I saw how passionate you are about our traffic signals and all of this, and it's, it's wonderful to learn about. So yeah, I think this is, this is great, so thank you.
John, Laura.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'm enlisting an order, or enlisting a motion on ordinance number 5.33.4, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 5.33.4 on second reading.
Thank you, Todd. I have a motion from Hendricks and second from Hefte. Hendricks.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
Wiltz.
Hi.
Dyke.
Yes.
And that also passes. And that concludes ordinances. Next up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, resolutions. Resolution number 25-082, a resolution to amend number 19-023, series of 2019. Resolution number 21-022, series of 2021. Resolution number 21-022.1, series of 2021. Resolution number 22.014, series of 2022, to allow, subject to the satisfaction of certain conditions, a partial waiver to defer compliance with certain requirements of sections 13.07.060 and 13.07.070 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance as amended, associated with the processing of the sketchup preliminary plan for certain segments of real property commonly known as the Anthology North Property until those segments are ready for development. Presenting today, Kelsey Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for that introduction. I'm here to present an amendment to Resolution 19023 as amended, as you just stated. We're going to call this the partial waiver resolution. So this resolution talks about the development of the Anthology North Property, which is generally seen in this planning map here. So what does this partial waiver resolution do? Generally, whenever you are developing land, it has to be all done at once. Because this is an enormous piece of property, back in 2019, you pass this partial waiver to allow a phased development of this property. Effectively, you've got phase one down here, phase two up here north of Great Plainway, and phase three over here just west of Chambers Road. I don't have a better map currently to show you that, but that's just good to keep in mind. So this, this partial waiver has been amended several times to account for different challenges and allow for the development in an orderly fashion. This latest amendment has three major changes to it. The first is clarifying how the conveyance of school sites will work. Those are these three planning areas in blue. There are two elementary schools and one middle and high school site. It discusses the plating process and development requirements for segment two up at the top. And then it also discusses the phasing and development order within segment three, again on the left side of your screen. So let's talk about school sites first. Currently, the resolution requires that the property owner convey the school sites to the town to hold. But the question came up, what happens if the school sites don't need to be used to school sites? As we all know, enrollment is declining across Douglas County School District, and there are now challenges for building schools. So we wanted to clarify that process so that we're sure that the property that is conveyed by the property owner is either used for a school site or is used appropriately. So what the proposal is, is that the property owner will continue to dedicate these school sites to the town following the first plat for each segment. As you'll notice, there's one in each. This conveyance would be subject to a deed restriction that the property be used for a school site, or if not a school site, for another public purpose, which is up to the town's reasonable discretion. After the conveyance, the school district would have two years to request that the town then convey that school site to the school district to be used for a school purpose. They would need to provide a binding commitment then, that the school site will be used for a, the construction of an elementary or middle and high school site, per planning area, and that the school would be constructed and opened within three years of the request. The conveyance would be subject to another deed restriction, that if the school is not constructed and open within those three years, or if the school site is ever no longer used for school purposes, it would revert back to the town. For the elementary school sites here, if they revert back to the town or never requested by the school district, they can be used by the town for a public purpose, or the town has the opportunity to work with the property owner to rezone those for another use that is consistent with our master plan. For the high school site, that big guy up north, if it remains with or reverts back to the town, the town can then cooperate with the property owner to rezone it for some other use that has a public benefit. This would be like commercial, mixed use, parks and open space, a combination of those uses, but everything would, again, need to be consistent with the master plan. So that's kind of the, the idea for these school sites. Do you have any questions about this before we move on to segment two?
Council question on the school sites, Laura.
So it's, it's, it's very interesting, Kelsey. I mean, tell us a little bit more about why we dedicate this school site and how that occurs with the property owner. Why is the property owner required to do this? And does the school system actually have any interest in this land?
So typically with annexations, we require property owners to dedicate land for school purposes. This is in order to offset all of the residential that's going to be in the development, so the kids have a place to go to school. That's pretty typical with every annexation agreement that we've done since we've incorporated. The school district is typically, at the time of annexation, they'll let us know if they would like property or if they'd like cash and lieu from the property owner. In this case, back when this, this property was annexed back in the 80s, they said we would like the property. However, things have changed, demographics change, and so there's been an open discussion with the school district that they might not necessarily be interested in all of these sites, but it's hard for them to give us a solid answer at this time.
Okay, and so that, that, this is the property owner's land, I mean, this is, they own that?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's going to go, the school doesn't have a need for it?
We don't, oh, well, if they have a need for it, they have the process they can use to request the land. And if it turns out that they don't need it, then it can be used for another public purpose or be reserved for the property owner.
And are populations increasing for schoolchildren in the area, or are they declining? Do you know?
I believe it's been declining. I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I do know in our, our estimates for schoolchildren has gone down to about one per household, Bryce, is that correct?
Thank you.
Anything else? John, questions?
So does the, does the school district have some kind of long-range capital improvement plan that we could cross-reference with these parcels?
They do. Bryce, do you want to speak to that a little better, Stacy?
So they do, and they have a ten?
So let's, for the record, Mr. Bright Matthews from the planning department?
Bryce, back, just from the plant. They do have a 10-year capital improvement program. It does show schools in general locations coming up, but it doesn't get down to the specificity of these sites, including a discussion of a middle school, high school to the west of here, I got to get my directions. They would admit Caspian's Low Tree Area.
So we would only have what, what they've told us in the past, which is they're not willing, have they told us anything in the past regarding these, these parcels?
In terms of their future interest in it? Most recently, I guess I'd say that they've been non-committal in terms of whether they'll need them or not. Generally, there have been statements about the elementary school sites that they'd be interested in the two, this, this development looking glass to west of Chambers would be the ones that they would foresee as being developable in the future.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Brady.
So just refreshing my memory, how many houses total are planned for this?
So there are, Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, a little over 3,000 for this section.
Okay.
And then a little over 3,000 for Looking Glass to the south.
Okay.
And then there's the Trails of Hope that was developed, and I think it was like 700 or 900, something like that.
So 60, 900, we'll just say 7,000. So if we are conservative and say half of those have one school age kid in the house, if we don't have school sites, then those kids now have to get inundated on the already existing schools that already have a bunch of trailers and 35 kids per classroom. Is that correct?
So they, yeah, they have, these sites are reserved for schools in the future. I can't really speak to the school district about pendants and flows of their student population. But the reason the properties are here is so that the school district needs them, they can build a school to respond to the, to the new development.
Thank you.
So is it, is it kind of like the schools that does kind of giving the first right of review?
Yeah.
That they have to build within two years or?
I, I think that's a fair way to look at it. Essentially, the school gets the first pass of these properties. They have two years to request them from the time they're conveyed to the town. And again, that is going to be concurrent with the development. So it's not like two years from today, they have to make the request. It'd be two years after the plan or whichever segment is involved. And then after they make the request, they have three more years to construct this block for that.
Still, it's a long time that they have to decide. I'm sorry. Can I put that in form of a question?
Sure.
How many, how many vacant school sites are there in, like, how many are just sitting there undeveloped? Do we know?
I, I should leave on that.
How many do we have in Parker?
Six, I believe.
Thank you.
Todd, question. All right, one here, right? That one here, right, correct? It's everybody's, everybody's vote, sorry. With that, open book. No, you have more to do. Is that, sorry, you threw me off, sorry.
As they were meaning to, here, this we go. All right, the second part of my presentation is the development of segment two. So segment two is that commercial area to the top of the screen there, and also has the middle and high school site, a few other sections. So how this would be developed is it would be developed as a minor development plat, and it would initially be subdivided into five unbuiltable tracks. So with those, there's also going to be a few development obligations. So the property owner would convey to us, is this also laser pointer? Or no, I think so. Okay, that's fine. They would convey the right-of-way for Great Plainway, west of Chambers Road, so that's going to be up there to the left, that will curve up there. They would provide the right-of-way for Jordan, south of Hess Road. You'll see that's right to the left of that planning area, 14 in blue. They would provide, convey to the town, the middle and high school site up at the top. They would also dedicate to the metro district all the, the open space in green for the applicable metro districts that serve on those tracks. They would design and construct Jordan Road. They would also do these stabilization improvements and the regional trail within Oak Gold that kind of follows that open space. And then they would also convey the fire district site, which is that little pink area, planning area 19, to the South Metro Fire Rescue within, I believe, 90 days of request. So that's the, the way that segment two would be developed. Any questions on that?
Council, any questions on segment two? Seeing none.
Okay. And then finally, we have segment three. So what is going to happen with segment three? Again, that's this area over here to the left. It would be developed in three subsegments, sort of like what you had approved already for section, or segment one here. This would be segment three, A, three B, three C. They would have to be platted and developed sequentially. This is intended to make sure that your roadway infrastructure keeps up with development. At the same time, as they are developing here, they would also complete the remaining portions of Great Plainway between Hess and Chambers, so we have that sort of middle top road there. They would complete Hess from Great Plainway until the boundary of the property, that's your top left road there. And then they would also finish up Oak Gold stabilization, stabilization improvements and the regional trail through that section here. So that's kind of the development in a nutshell. Do you have any questions?
Council, any more questions on the group, on all three parts? Seeing none, we'll open public comment at 9:07 PM. Any member of the public wishing, oh, do we have a presentation from, no. Wishing to address council?
I can just stand up and say that it's always a pleasure to be here, Chris Elliott, on behalf of what is the Tantera Development, as we refer to it today. Isn't Kelsey great? She does a really good job. I think talking about the, the school district issues, met with the school district over and over and over. The property's been zoned for 1984. I know. I wasn't there. Jim was a very young man at that point in time. But seriously, it's been, the zoning's been in place for a very long time. There seems to be a propensity of school districts, not just this one, but others, and they're not, it's not a bad thing, but when there's a new project that comes in, there's a desire to try and secure options. So what has happened is school sites have been requested, they've been designated, but we're just not making Americans anymore, apparently, because we don't occupy the, the school buildings. There's not the schoolchildren that there used to be. And as Bryce and Kelsey have said, the student population generation has gone from 2.2 to 2.2. the student population generation has gone from 2.2, 2.3 down to one or less per household. And we're just seeing this all over the place, where schools were provided in plans. And as time goes on, the school sites are really not necessary in order to make things work. So we think that what has been proposed is really logical, functional, and it gives us a chance to work with the school district. If they want a site, we'll make it work for them and, and move forward. If it doesn't, then this gives us, all of us, an opportunity to come up with a, a plan that works. So we would encourage you to go forward. The other two components were, the segment two issues are pretty straightforward. Happy to answer any questions on that. The segment three, we have moved through what we consider segment one A and one B. And we're active in segment one C, which will handle everything on the east side of Chambers. So it's good to get into the planning mode for what will happen on the west side and, and start working through that now while we have some time and energy and imagination, right? So with that, happy to answering questions.
Jimmy, I didn't state that he was the presenter. Is it okay to take questions?
That's fine.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Elliott? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. And thanks for your patience. With that, we'll open a public comment at 9:10. Any member of the Public wishing to address council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 9:10 and go back for closing comments. Todd, any to add?
No. On and support.
Thank you. Anne, do you think that?
I think it's, it seems reasonable. It's a consideration, the school an opportunity to, like, do something with that land, or otherwise, let's move on and let's do something else with it.
Thank you. Brady?
I did appreciate knowing to Anne's question that there are six sites in Parker right now that the school district has not developed. I mean, that, that helps put things in perspective to me because, you know, we've got a new development, where are the kids going to go? So I do, I do appreciate that. So thank you. It's actually made me kind of change my whole, my whole thought process on this. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Brady. John?
Support.
Thank you. Laura?
Yeah, no, I, this is very reasonable. And we have to remember that it's the property owner that is developing this site. And so if the school system does not utilize this land, then that, again, the town would work with the property owner to develop a plan for that land and properties. So that's pretty important. We have, remember basic property rights in United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, I think it's important to, to state in 1984, the, the thought back then was a little bit different than it is now. Now, we have people that are Asian in place in Parker. People come here and they live here, they, they fall in love, they don't move. The houses aren't turning over, they're a couple of generational turnover that you see commonly in a lot of places. People stick around and grandparents move here. And so we're Asian in place. And you've seen three elementary schools close in Allen's Ranch in the last year for that exact reason. So I appreciate a new look at private property in Parker. Thank you for stating that, Laura. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number 25-082 as part of the regular agenda.
I have a motion to?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Hefta, a second from Barrington. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Deick?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for sticking around. Next up, agreements. Item nine, I'm sorry, amendments to the amended and restated Stro Ranch Hess Ranch annexation agreement, Trails of Crowfoot property. Mr. Maloney, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the owner of the Trails of Crowfoot property, the illustrious Chris Elliott, has requested an amendment to paragraph nine of the annexation agreement for Hess Ranch. Remember, you're dealing with Anthology North, the prior items, which is also known as Stro Ranch. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to revise the process for dedicating a 12-acre elementary site located on the Trails of Crowfoot property. The proposed amendment would use a similar concept for dedicating school sites, referenced in the 2019 partial waiver amendment that you just approved, again, for the Anthology North property. By way of background, Town Council approved the annexation agreement for Hess Ranch on September 1st, 2015, which included the Trails of Crowfoot property. Paragraph nine of the annexation agreement provides for the dedication of the school site located on Trails of Crowfoot property to the school district no later than the town's probationary acceptance of the public drive located adjacent to the school site. The school site, so the public street located adjacent to the school site received probationary approval on February 25th of 2022. The property owner, Mr. Elliott, requested the school district accept the conveyance of the school site. However, the school district responded that it has no plans to construct and operate a school at this particular location. The purpose of the proposed amendment to paragraph nine of the annexation agreement is to provide the school district with an additional two-year period of time. And that would start with the approval of the amendment, if you do so this evening. Again, they would have two years to request the conveyance of this school site. If the school district makes the request, then the school district has to enter into a binding commitment to construct a school within three years. The conveyance of the school site, much like Anthology North, will be subject to a deed restriction that the school is not constructed and opened within three years of the request. Or if the school district seizes to use the property as a school after the opening of the school, the school property, school site, will revert back to the property owner, again, Mr. Elliott's company. The proposed amendment further provides that in event the school district does not provide the request within the two-year period, or the school district notifies the property owner in writing that the school district will not construct a school on the school property, or otherwise does not want to own the school property prior to the end of the two-year period. There's another word, wait for it. Or the school property reverts to the property owner for the reasons I just described. The property owner may seek to rezone the school property for other uses consistent with the Parker master plan as permitted under the Hess Ranch Development Guiding Plan. The significant difference between what you're doing here and what you did with Anthology North, the partial waiver, is at no time will the town come into ownership of this property. I mean, it could if the property owner decides not to develop it. But with the Anthology North partial waiver, the town is controlling that property the whole time. We are not in this circumstance. I think particularly because the school district has indicated they don't have an interest in the property. So the uses that may be made of the property by Mr. Elliott's company include residential development, senior assisted living facilities, attainable residential development, parks and open space, or a public facility. There is alternative language in there that the property owner may offer to convey the school site to the town and that the town may use that property for a public purpose. But it's discretionary on the part of the town whether or not it will accept that property. Again, assuming that the property owner does not want to develop it for the uses I just took you through. That's basically it. Any questions, Mayor and Council?
Thank you. John? Laura, still have any questions? John?
No questions.
Brady? Yeah. Just a real quick question. So that site existed from the beginning of this, of this development, correct? And, and the, the school district didn't use it? The school district then chartered a school that is in the same area? And that charter did not go on this piece of property?
Correct. Now, there is a school site, and the elementary school site is located west of Chambers. As Bryce indicated, the school district is interested in this thing. But they're not interested in developing the line of Trails of Crowfoot.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll open that public comment at 9:18. Any member of the public wishing to address council on this item? I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Again, Chris Elliott on behalf of Trails of Crowfoot. All I would indicate is that we acquired the property in 2015. We planned the school site, it was part of the annexation agreement. We've owned it since then. We pay property taxes on it every year. We've asked that it be conveyed, and the answer's been no. So, and then on top of that, immediately south of Trails of Crowfoot, the school district did charter a, chartered a school. But it has been built and is open. So we pray for your approval of the amendment.
So can I take questions here again? Counsel, any questions for Mr. Elliott? None?
No.
I have one, if you could, because you used to, you mentioned it. You mentioned that you are paying a property tax on a piece of property that is to be conveyed if they ever want it in the school district. Is that correct?
Correct. It's assessed on a commercial basis.
So, wow. So assessed on a commercial basis, and you could pay that and they consider that property in perpetuity if this was, if it's a status quo to this evening?
Correct.
Follow-up question. Who determined that it was on a commercial basis versus like agricultural, just unbuildable land?
You have, in order to get an agricultural status, you have to demonstrate an agricultural use.
Got to put a catalog on it.
So, but before, so before you purchased it in 2015, wasn't it already sitting there as agricultural use?
It was unplatted.
Okay.
So we, we came through and platted it in accordance with the zoning and so forth. So we really created the parcel at that point in time.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, you said that, and I was like, wait a second.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Elliott? All right, seeing none, open public. Thank you, sir. Again, open up public comment at 9:20. Any member of the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 9:20. Come back for final comments. Todd, any to add?
On and support.
Brady, her. Looking at her.
I, I just, I don't think it's, it's right for the school district to, to sit on this forevermore. And they have no, you know, plans to, to put a school on it. So I think that it should, I think that the developer should get to choose.
Thank you, Anne. Brady?
No, I mean, like I said after the last one, my, my values have shifted a little bit knowing that we have lots of other land the school could develop here. So, you know, our mayor has stated it several times. We, we come into these meetings and our minds get changed and we learn new things and we never have the same opinion. So I'm, I'm very happy about that. I'm happy that we do have other options. And to Anne's point, yeah, you shouldn't have to sit there in perpetuity. Is that the, I can never say the word. You shouldn't have to sit there forever holding land that isn't going to be developed. So I think this is a good thing.
Thank you, Brady. John?
Support.
Laura?
And the school district is not a party to any agreement on this matter. That's something that we need to keep in mind. This is, again, property owner has a duty to hold the land for the school district. We have to do what's reasonable. Because again, this is a property owner that has to hold the land for the school district.